Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please stand and join Councilman Long on the presentation to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer. Do we have anybody from the Minister Alliance here? Okay, please join me in our prayer. Oh Lord God, we are so thankful today that the blessings that you have given us individually and as a community and as a council. Please guide us in our deliberations today for the betterment of our community. Please open our ears so that we may hear and understand each other and please be with us as we proceed in our deliberations, this city council. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call to order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting. Second item is public comments, city announcements, recognitions. Do we have any of those? I know we've got a number of comments here. They're all pertaining to items on the agenda and we will do those as we... There maybe is one. Mr. Colburn? John Colburn? Did you want to... Were you speaking to a specific item or was this a public announcement that you wanted to speak on here?
Pardon me?
You're saying you wanted to speak about boarding up and...
The house to tear down.
Okay, okay. Wait till that comes up then on the agenda. Sorry, it wasn't clear. Okay, the third item then on the Public Works Authority meeting is the consent agenda, item A, which is the approval of the minutes of Public Works Authority meeting of February 4th. I'll entertain a motion.
A motion.
And a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please submit your votes.
I'll vote strength.
See the votes. Unanimous approval, plus one. Mr. Batherode, you can only vote one.
One. Oh, I thought we could do two votes.
Unanimous approval then of the consent agenda and that is the last item on our Public Works Authority meeting, so I adjourn that meeting. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we go to our city council meeting of February 18th. The second item is consent agenda items A through L. Hi, I'm sorry, A through I, which is A is the approval of the minutes of a special city council workshop of February 4th. B is the approval of the minutes of our city council meeting of February 4th. C is to approve a request by Joe Mackey for a partial lump sum payment on his retirement plan. B is CPI amendment for Hanger to Steve Wilkins, lease number 14A. E is the approval of CPI amendment of lease number 20A, Morty Duke. F is CPI amendment to Hanger, lease number 25, Dan Burnett. G is the approval of CPI amendment to Hanger, number 26, Robert Schmedeker. Schmedeker? H is the approval of lease agreement with Gregory Bashir to lease Hanger site number And I is the approval of memorandum of agreement between the city of Guthrie and the... Or city, yeah, city of Guthrie concerning the regional airport and the FAA administration for automated surface observing system.
What does that mean? Can we pull that one and talk about that?
Okay. We can.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain then a motion for... To approve consent agendas, item A through H.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Submit your votes.
Just one.
I'll vote strength.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval to approve consent agendas, item A through H. Now, item number I, the MOA. Shalon, you want to talk to us a little bit about what that means?
So the ASOS...
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Shalon Stanley, director at the airport. So the ASOS provides critical weather information for all pilots coming in or out of the airport. That will give you various things. So I call up a frequency on the radio and it's going to give me your rain, if you have rain. So I'm coming in the airport. What's the distance? What's the visibility? What's the sky condition? What's the ceiling? Cloud level? Is it raining? Is it fog? So that's basically FAA provides that service for us at no cost. They're renewing their contract from a five-year to a 20-year. And basically what that is, is to cut down on paper. At most airports, they have more than one weather service. We at the airport have one automated surface observing system. Each one of those packets the FAA presents, every weather facility on the airport has to have a legal description and a map. So in order to cut down all that, all they have to do now with this new FAA memorandum of agreement is that all airports will have just one agreement, one piece of paper showing all of the facilities on the airport. And we just have one now. So it's safety for our pilots. It's very important.
It's a must-have.
A must-have.
Okay, thank you. So going from five-year to 20-year, does this lock us into...
It doesn't go anywhere if you don't...
You gotta have it.
I think it's like a 30-day.
Okay. All right. Okay? Good. Very good. Yeah, I've heard a motion in. A motion and a second. Submit your votes.
I'll vote strength.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then for a consent agenda item number I. Agenda item number three, public hearing to determine properties identified in resolution 2020-1 concerning a dilapidated... Whether they're dilapidated and have become detrimental to the health and safety and welfare of general public and if the... Or if the property creates a safety... Fire hazard dangerous to other properties. So this is now a public hearing. Many of you or most of you that have wanted to respond to any of the particular items, the houses that are listed here have already filled out. If you haven't and you want to make a comment, you need to have one of these. And how we're going to do this, staff will be presenting, I think, pictures of the... Of the property built. Be presenting pictures of the property and statements about whether utilities are on and so on and so forth. If there is a person that wants to speak to that particular property, you'll do that when Bill presents that property. Okay? So some of you have identified the house that you want to talk about, some of you haven't. So I'm going to rely on you as Bill identifies the address. After he makes his comments, I'll ask if there are anybody that wants to comment on that particular piece of property. And then ultimately, the council will vote on them en masse. Okay? Or... We can vote on them individual, I guess.
You might make recommendations, but the resolution...
Is for one.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so are we pretty clear on that?
Yes.
You voted twice.
I know.
All right. All right, Bill, go ahead.
I'm Bill Darby. I'm the code enforcement officer for the city of Guthrie. We've got several slides, so I'll try and be quick with it. The first house in exhibit A is 413 East Vilas. This was involved in a fire on December 12, 2019. It didn't have water service for a year prior to that and the electric service was off eight months prior to the fire. Is there somebody here who wants to...
Yes, that's my house. That's my mother's.
Okay. Sir, if you'd come to the microphone, identify yourself and your address and any comments that you want to make about that particular property in question.
This is my mother's house.
Name and address.
Very dumb.
Okay.
413 East Vilas.
You live there?
No.
Okay.
905 South Tisna.
Okay.
2105 Gloria Plain.
Okay, thank you.
This house is in her name. I maintain it and rent it out for... But there was a renter there that's got a move fire and I know they had the leg... The water. He passed that, sure. I know that leg gone, he did. Thank you.
We leave it up to the renters to put up their deposit and pay their utility bills.
When was the last time it was rented?
If there wasn't anything up there, I was not aware of it.
It was rented up.
Okay.
Which again, how long was that?
2019.
December this past year?
Yeah.
So a couple of months ago, three months ago.
It doesn't look like that right now. I have been working on this area from a baseball ball and probably with a... And I should have the front of that house in a couple of months.
So you're rebuilding the house?
Yes. Totally. Mainly the front. The interior with glass and plastic, I'll be able to get on that interior front room, that living room. It needs to be insulated. And...
Okay. So what I was hearing you say is the exterior will be kind of refurbished in the next two months and then five months for the inside?
Yes.
Is that your timeline that you're proposing to us?
Yes.
So Bill, what's your interaction with this been?
Well, we haven't had any building permits applied yet on this house. I'm sure the minimum needs wiring, plumbing, that probably enough is applied, so it needs to apply building permits there and get that started.
So what is your thought? Has this been a progress? Have they been making progress on this thing?
I haven't seen any progress. I've just seen the front windows have been boarded up the last time I went up there. The next slide shows more. This is where George picked in. House wrap on the back of it.
But your intent is to refurbish, remodel and rent again?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions, council?
Is this being done? Is the work being done by yourself? Are you hiring contractors?
Yes. Like, there's no plumbing. The living room, there's one... Wait, like, after we're like, here, like, the...
Okay. All right. Bill? Has the electric service been cut by ONGE?
Yeah, we're going to disconnect that fire.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bill, what's the timeline for renovating this thing in your opinion?
So what I would recommend is declaring a dangerous dilapidation. And if they're making progress on the house, we're not going to save you money.
Yeah.
Tear it down.
But it gives us something to hold the property when it gets fired, so to speak.
All right. Leroy?
What staff normally recommends on all of these is that we go ahead and adopt a resolution and condemn it. That way we've got an instrument used to make sure that there's progress. And what we request is that there be steady progress every 30 days. So if you go 60 days and nothing's changed, then we're going to say, hey, we're going to go back to city council or we're going to authorize staff to put it out for bids to tear it down. But as long as we inspect it every 30 days and you're making progress towards either removing it or rehabbing it, we'll continue to work with you if that's the guidance from the city council.
Yeah, that was basically my question.
All right. Notice has been sent to the owner.
Yes.
How long ago?
Twelve days ago.
Okay, but there have been no communication as to your plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Does our notice ask for anything like that?
Just notifying them of a hearing.
Okay, so this is their... From their perspective, this is their first opportunity?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else that you have?
No.
Okay. Where I think we're going to be headed with people that are going to be talking to us about their plans for renovation, as the city manager has identified, there's probably going to be a general statement that the property will go... Will be condemned. But if there is substantial significance...
Progress.
...in 30-day increments, that the condemnation will not go through. But we want to see that kind of progress. We all want to see those facilities that are rehabbable be rehabbed.
One correction, the condemnation will happen by adoption resolution. We just won't put it out for bids for demolition as long as you make progress.
What he said.
And that's how we've done it for the last... Since I've been around five years. And the people that wanted to rebuild, we've allowed them to let them go rebuild and some have and then some wanted to and didn't.
Okay.
So you won't need to come back to us at all?
No, won't need to come back to us. Bill can take it.
If there's...
They'll work with Mr. Darby.
Okay. Okay. Anything else that you... Okay, you understand kind of the ground rules that we're talking about here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Very good. Cool. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Bill? Let's go on to the next one.
One thing I might point out is if anybody's going to rehab their house, you've got to bring it up to code. So you can't just do cosmetic things and think you're done. It's got to meet code when you're done in order to satisfy this. Sorry, I just thought everybody should be aware of that.
All right, next house is 414 South Third Street. This hasn't had water service since July of 2009. Electric service was off in January of 2011 and gas was off in 2012.
Eight years.
Yeah, the roof's falling in on the back porch there and it's kind of hard to tell from these photos, but there's holes in the roof here. Is there anybody here for this house?
Okay. Let's move on.
415 South Third. It's been since April 2016 since it had water service. Electric service was turned off in 2011. And then you see the trees are falling down on the house here. Is anybody here for this one?
All right. Hey, Bill, before we go on, can you mention to the new on council and the audience what happens at this point? Because we don't just go in and get a bid. You're going to make an offer to these people to tear the house down on their own or have you already done that?
That's correct. So we give a 10-day notice of the hearing. We mail that to the property owner of record. At that point, we have the hearing and then there's 30 business days after that when we take no action, which calendar days, that's like 45. So the property owner has that 45 days to start to obtain building permits if they're wanting to renovate the house or soliciting bids for having it removed themselves. We've also gotten to the point in this process where we have got bids and the property owners hired the contractor to do that. So we weren't out of pocket money. They paid the contractor that was here doing demolitions to us.
To do it.
To remodel the houses.
Okay. Good deal.
So this is 416 South Fourth Street.
Do you know if 414 and 415, they're next door, are they owned by the same person? And do you know, are those out-of-state owners?
Which one?
414 South Third and 415 South Third. They're across the street from one another. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, you're on Third Street. Yeah, they are across the street from each other.
They're different owners. It shows it on the agenda. Okay.
I believe 415, the property owner's in El Reno and I have to go look at the other one.
Okay. Shows it up in the body, James, up at the top. I see it. I see the property owner. I just didn't know if they're out-of-state or not.
They're out-of-state.
Maybe that's why they weren't here. Just curiosity.
James, I can tell you at 415, I know they're not out-of-state, that they were here locally for a period of time. They're in El Reno now, but I know they're not out-of-state. We also post the houses. That way, if they haven't updated their address and record, the house is posted too.
So they can see it on Google or whatever.
So they can see it. How bad people contacting me just off of these postings recently? Because they generally get a phone call from somebody. Okay, so 416 South Fourth, no water service since 2007. Electric was off in 2003. You see, it's unsecured. It's in a state of dilapidation. Always on the roof.
Okay.
Is somebody here for 416?
Coming to the microphone, sir?
My name is Wayne. If you're on the... And for myself, I might like to get it pulled down.
Okay.
Trying to see if I... Get a contractor or myself, I see arguably what it would be. Right, of course. Right.
Bill would be your guy on that. He'd be able to help you out on that, for sure.
This is what I want to do. I want to go ahead and, you know, keep the lot.
Tear it down.
Tear it down.
And I was trying to see what would be the...
45, what is it?
Yeah, we've been... Go ahead, Bill.
The gentleman wants to tear it... You heard what he said.
Yeah, we'll go 30 business days before we even go out to bids. And at that point, we'll go out to bids and whoever's working on stuff, we wouldn't bring a bid to you to award if someone's making progress.
Yeah, well, his progress is to tear it down.
His progress, tear it down.
And what I'm hearing him say is he kind of wants to know if he could get a cheaper deal by the city tearing it down and billing him, if you will, or him doing... Having it done privately or him...
Using your contractor is probably the best deal.
That has happened in the past. Yeah, that's what I want to know. What I want to know is, you know, the best way to keep it.
Yeah, we're with you.
Because he...
I mean...
I mean, it's by myself.
Right.
You know...
But we just don't want this to be talked... You know, I don't want to be talking about this six months from now.
Well...
We want this to be happening fairly quickly.
There's one house on that lot, right? In a garage, I guess?
Yes.
I mean, there's a range, right? I don't know what the range would be.
What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to go beyond the 45 days.
That's what I see.
And then I'm trying to, if I could, say, if the city would do this, if I give a contract, if they wait to, I mean, make payments on this, or I would say a bill, you know, to get this completed. I don't know. See, please, they're talking.
Yeah. Well, so in the past, people that were... We went in and tore the property down to the ground. Leroy, what did we do? I mean, we put a lien on it at that point.
They can pay it off.
When we demolish a structure, we send an invoice if the city does it and not the property owner. We send the property owner an invoice. They have 60 days...
Six months.
To pay it.
Yep.
So they've got six months to pay it. If you don't pay it, then we put a lien for that amount on the property and of course you would have time to pay it off before it goes to tax sale.
Yeah, that's what you're going to be at, maybe a little bit more at the end of the day.
Yeah. Yeah. But that in a best...
You need to look at that in a best case, six months is what you should look at.
Yeah, that's what I...
Okay.
And prior to that, you would give me an estimate? I mean, would you...
We won't have estimates until we put it out for bids. We have to go through a bid process. And we'll... Once we open those bids, we know what it will cost us to have it tore down the city. You can visit with contractors and we can provide you the contractors that typically bid and you can get prices from them at any time, but the city has to go through a formal bid process if we're going to get prices.
You're going to be cheaper trying to find a deal on your own. That's what's going to happen.
Well, I'm going to try.
Okay, I think that's...
Worst case, city takes it down on your behalf.
I think that's... You need to be coordinating that with Bill.
Yeah.
And it's not going to... If you're concerned that this is going to happen sooner than the 45 days, it is not because of the formal process that we have. So you've got that window of opportunity.
Try to bid.
Yes. Yeah. Okay?
I give that to us, man.
All right.
That's what I'm...
Good. I'd work with Mr. Darby, but he can give you a list of who the city has had responses from in the past and that might be a good start for you. Okay?
The impact of... The official...
That's fine, too. We're just concerned about getting it torn down because it's dilapidated and unsafe.
I'm scared of getting it torn down, too.
Okay.
But I do want to make...
Very good. Yep.
Thank you.
Can I have an option to say, you know, I mean, you know, once I get it torn down, fence being...
To put fences around the property?
Yes.
See no reason why not?
Your property.
Yeah. If you're still your property.
Well, you've got a certain amount from the road. You can go with stockade fence and... That's an item. Could he push forward?
About the bounty, right?
Yeah.
But I mean, the steel I did is talking about the bounty, about wanting to be...
Yeah. You can talk to him. We've got a number of properties that we need to get through, Mr. Nephew, so talk with him on that, but get the property taken... Get it taken care of. Get it torn down. Okay?
Thank you.
Bill?
Next property is 502 South Third Street. This is an accessory structure. It... We don't have any records of water there, having water service there. Electric was off in 1996, about 23 years ago. And there's no gas. I don't have any records of when the gas was turned off, but there's... Just the gas rising there, no meter. And there's some here to this one.
The microphone, sir?
Bob Walker, 2500, Simpson Court, Edmond, Oklahoma.
Okay.
I pay a electric bill on that every month, so about $28 a month. It's got a light on it also. Regular electric, $22, $5 for the extra light. And there hasn't been any gas or water on it. I agree that because it was a warehouse back when I did lawn mowing for the city of Guthrie for nuisance mowing. I did that for about eight years with Bobby Ekel, but those are things in the past. But anyway, I've learned a lot since I've been here about how some of this stuff works nowadays than the way it worked 10 years ago or 15 years ago. This is the first notice I had on this property. Haven't had any other notice except...
I'm not a building inspector, so I may be a little short. But it means it's gotta meet plumbing codes, gotta meet electric code. Uh, it's gotta meet all the life safety codes. Um, you gotta have running water. Um, so it would have to come up to what HUD refers to as minimum, uh, life safety property standards. And they've got, we normally go by, there's a guideline for section eight housing, which is the minimum things that a house can have and be livable. And we normally use that as a guideline that has got to at least meet section eight standards, uh, which is a HUD program, and they have minimum property standards to, uh, to live in a house.
And if I can add, this one in particular is also in the flood zone, so it's gonna have to come into compliance with our flood prevention, uh, ordinance.
And anything like that that might have been grandfathered at one time or another, once it gets out of compliance and we condemn it, it loses that privilege. And then it has to meet the zoning ordinances and those kind of things because now it has to be brought up to code.
And everybody wants it to be safe, so it ought to come up to code anyway.
All right. So how are we getting off on that Bill says the electricity hasn't been on since 2007 or something?
That's what O.G. reported to us.
And then you're saying it was on last month or a couple of months ago?
No, last year before the flood, uh, in my, uh, whenever the flood was last year.
Long extension court, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you're facing the same challenge. I mean, you know, um, you've got, you've got two facilities, two houses here that you've got a short window of opportunity and maybe, given that you're, it's no longer grandfathered in, in the floodplain, you've got some other challenges there. But that dialogue needs to be happening pretty quickly.
Well, how do you get, how do you bring something up to code in a floodplain when it falls out of the grandfather clause? You don't, do you?
You have to raise it a foot above the ex-flood violation.
I mean, you know, the honest answer is it's gonna take a lot of money. I mean, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing. But it's not an easy solution.
I just want to be everybody to know what's going on. I mean, I didn't know that.
Is it right now out, out of grandfathered?
It will be tonight, yes.
Cause it's, uh, cause it's dilapidated.
I see one picture up there, oh, one, twenty-two, nineteen, and eleven, nineteen, twenty-nineteen. I don't understand that.
Yeah, I'm looking, the one I'm looking at is twelve, twenty, nineteen, twelve, thirty-one, nineteen.
Are there any pictures?
There were a lot of pictures.
Do you want to show them?
Okay.
Can you give me the date, last week, uh, within two weeks?
I think it's irrelevant, it's irrelevant discussion.
This is the back of the house.
Well, I'm looking at the last two months.
The reason there's so many different dates is because we were there for code enforcement on other issues, accumulation of material, uh, parking in the yard, derelict vehicles.
Stop right there, please, sir. You see that pole right there? It goes up to that front biggest tree. The left side of that's not my property. I have fifty feet between that pole and the back and the right.
Okay. You need to be having that dialogue. That, that's not germane, I think, to what the council is making a decision on today.
Council needs to understand that I've had to mow city property for, I think, for the time I've had this house.
Understand.
As much as my own.
Understand.
You don't have to mow city property.
Well, I stopped mowing it, and that's when all this started, sorta. But the renter did have that car on the left side of that garage, which I only have a foot off that garage on the back west side. That would be the west side. It doesn't look like that today, but the city's property has been mowed, and it makes it look pretty bad.
Okay. You, you, you've got, you've got some work to be doing.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Does that mean it's gonna be condemned?
It will be condemned.
When we get through here, all of these are gonna be condemned, and you'll have, you have this window to make satisfactory progress. Uh, and you've got some additional ones because now it's in the, you're not grandfathered into the floodplain.
Well, then the recommendation, which should read, would be to have it condemned if, on basis if I don't have it fixed up. If it can't be condemned and I have to lift the house up.
Sir, look at these pictures on January twenty-second, nineteen. That's over a year ago. We should have condemned this property a year ago.
Now, that's, that's, that's when it is just messed up. There's no, there's people living in that house right there at that time, sir.
I, I understand that, but by the appearance of the exterior.
That was the garage right there. The interior is straight, the floor is good, the joists is good, the walls are good, the windows are good. When he moved out, it flooded, he broke all the windows, suppose, okay, so it's taken me time to close it up and clean it up.
Well, again, you've got a window to make, to make those changes.
Then it won't be condemned?
No, it's gonna be, the, the, the resolution tonight will be, all of these properties will be condemned, uh, and, and then we'll go start the condemnation process as, uh, as the city manager has identified. And if you, if you or any of the other owners are making significant progress, then the actual demolition may or may not take place. So that's what you have.
But how does that, on this one, how does that work when it's gotta be lifted?
Well.
There's only one option, you either lift it or you demolish it.
If that, if that.
So that's your two options, you demolish it or you lift it.
It has to be in compliance.
It has to be in compliance. There's no other option on this house, is what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm hearing too, and that's what I'm trying to get to, the, if you condemn it right now, but give me a chance to fix it up and then take, lift the, uh...
As a part of you fixing it up, you're gonna have to lift it. All right, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Bill, next one.
This is nine sixteen West Logan. Uh, we had a fire here in October twelfth of two thousand and seventeen. Uh, you can see the back part of the house, the roof has collapsed here. And that's another side shot from the other side of the house. And it's daylight through this roof here. The water was turned off at this address in two thousand and nine. Uh, it did have electric and gas up till the fire in two thousand and seventeen, and I believe we have somebody here to speak about this property.
So somebody speak on this property?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, come forward. Identify yourself, sir.
Yes, sir. My name's Al Pritchett, and I'm the owner of the house.
Okay.
And, uh, uh...
Where is that?
Oh, I live at one thousand four Shady Creek Circle.
Okay.
And, uh, I've lived there since sixty-three, and, or that's when I first moved in there. And I lived there till sixty-nine, and I went in the military. But since then, I've maintained, after I got back, I've maintained that place and everything, and I've remodeled it inside several times. And, uh, my stepson was living in there, uh, and, uh...
But the fire was two years ago? Is this?
Yeah.
Isn't that what I heard?
Yeah.
Okay, so it hasn't been lived in for two years?
No. I, I've been kinda sick.
Okay, so what's the plan?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll let him speak, if you don't mind.
I'm William Lord, I live at one oh one South First Street. Um, he actually, he has, has this property, uh, completely maintained. There was a house fire, and he had it completely remodeled. There was a house fire in two thousand and eight, and that's when I came down. And I myself completely remodeled it, put a new roof on it, every nail, board, shingled by myself, after he'd already remodeled the house, so we showed capability of keeping, you know, keeping the house good. Uh, if you notice the front half, uh, that was from the, or on the picture to your right, the, uh, are these the only pictures? Where'd it go?
There's four.
Yeah, just four more.
There's one of the, but there's some back.
Okay, well, the, the front of the house, I'd, uh, I redid it, that's where that, uh, fire was from two thousand and eight, on the right-hand picture, uh, the right-hand side of the, of the picture. I redid that, that's where the, uh, fire was. The back part was totally fine. But I put a new roof, I reframed everything from the top plate of the living room. Okay, yeah, right there.
I think, William, I don't mean to cut you short, but they're really more curious about what the plan to fix the property.
Okay, well, I wanted to show intentions of what happened. Right. Well, I just got that back roof, uh, done, the one that you see melted right there, and that's when the fire happened. It was an electrical fire in the attic. Uh, at that time, you know, he, his health, cancer and everything, he doesn't have the income, and I understand you want me to explain it. But, uh, when, when that fire happened, I was forced to go into a tent and live in the backyard, which the city says you can't do that. So I ended up down, I couldn't help him, I couldn't stay here. I ended up down in the tent by the Jesus House. I just got back to Guthrie, uh, a year and a half ago, and that's when I started finding out about organizations and all that that help, uh, people in the community and all that, and I volunteered for all this stuff. And Neighborhood Solutions, which I'm getting to my point, James. Uh, Neighborhood Solutions, uh, talked with, uh, Suda Charm. This morning, we had an interview. She's gonna help, uh, they're gonna help rebuild it. Uh, the front side of the house is, the fire didn't affect it, it's just the back part.
Okay.
The roof is down because of the fire, which we need to put a new roof and stuff in there. The gas, all that, I have a tent pole already put in there, uh, to help with the reconstruction. And, uh...
So what's your timeframe for doing all of this?
See, that depends on, uh, on Neighborhood Solutions. We've gotta finish the paperwork with them. And also, uh, North Church, I got people coming to help with that, so...
But it's a rental house, right?
No, it's his, it's his house, it hasn't been rented. I lived in it so I could redo all this. He didn't have the money to pay anybody, and he couldn't pay me.
Oh, I thought he'd moved out of it and he was renting the house, is what I thought I heard.
No.
Rent was just an in-kind payment for you doing the work?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is this house also in floodplain? I believe it is.
It's close if it's not.
It's right on the cusp, I believe.
Cheryl, is that all, do, do you, don't you only do Neighborhood Solutions on primary residences, though? And that, is that what this is gonna be, a primary resident?
Yes, he's wanting to die in this house, the cancer's came back, and that's the whole purpose of re-fixing this.
Yeah, you're right, it is primary residence, it's not rentals.
Okay. All right. So you're somewhat dependent upon Neighborhood Solutions, um, other donation?
Right. I'm gonna end up redoing the work, or if they wanna pay somebody to do it, whatever, we're trying to get this back up so he can go back over there, so he can pass away in this house.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not an option, that's just what's gotta happen. I mean, I'm not telling y'all that, I'm just saying, this, this is our goal, is for him, this is the house that he grew up in. We've already fixed it up once, we showed intent that we can do it twice. We can show that we can do the work. I've got the temporary pole there, the electric, I've got the ga, gas, water, all that stuff can be turned on at any time. I've just gotta do the structural on top, which I'm in the process of getting that, uh...
But you, but you understand that what action we're taking here tonight, if, if, if we, if action is not seen on improving the property...
Right.
That the city moves on?
No, I totally understand that.
Okay.
Uh, William?
Yes, ma'am.
They also, usually don't have, they can't start just tomorrow and work on it. Does Sue realize that it's been put up for condemnation?
Yes, ma'am, I spoke with her. Uh, Sue, actually, uh, he filled out the work with, uh, the paperwork with Dottie this morning.
Okay.
And Sue...
Is this for a USDA loan?
Yes, ma'am.
I see, okay.
They, I talked with Sue also today. Uh, she said, in reference to your house, and, uh, they will, they are committed to the fifteen grand that they can give them to work on the house.
Okay.
But that's dependent on North Church. If North Church won't come in and stand the balance to get the house complete, then Neighborhood Solutions won't give them anything at all.
This house is also in floodplain.
I think, I think you're probably right.
I am right.
Is it in a floodplain?
It is.
The water hasn't touched it since the nineties.
So the house is gonna have to be lifted, too.
See, I don't understand that, because I, I understand about the whole floodplain and all that, but we are the last houses on the block, all my neighbors and all that. I mean, if, if they make me do mine at the same time, because the, the house, it, it, the structure below the ceiling plate is not hurt. There's only one corner piece, uh, on the picture on the right, uh, back right corner, there's probably about a ten-foot section that only has to be replaced on the wall. The only thing that's gone in the house is the roof, where, it was the, it was an attic fire, it was an electric fire.
Okay.
So I need to replace the stuff, just the roof above, and probably ten-foot section of the back corner.
Okay.
And we're planning on redoing the house to make it look good.
Sir, you understood, you hear the last conversation, that if it's in the floodplain, it loses the grandfather by being condemned, that's the whole new ballgame.
Right, well, that's why I'm trying to avoid, or trying to see where the condemnation part comes in, because if, if I, if I show that I'm gonna go through the efforts and go through the paperwork and do all that to get the house fixed, it's only the, the roof part structurally that's bad.
You're still gonna have to pass code on everything else before they're gonna turn electricity on.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And, and you're still gonna have to pass code in terms of flood. How in the world do we have houses in that area that are in the flood zone, and all the others were torn out?
Well, I can understand that.
I thought it was all condemned, it was in the flood zone.
The city of Guthrie got so much money to buy all them houses down there, and they ran out of money before they, uh, got all the houses bought.
Okay.
And that's the reason that one wasn't bought.
All right, so let me just tell you, the other gentleman, that as, as the, as the resolution stands right now, uh, that all of these properties will be condemned under the same, uh, motion, um, if it's not, if it's not modified. Okay?
Right.
All right.
Modified as far as lifting the house up?
No, if it's not, if the, if the motion is not modified.
Okay. So I'll have...
The only way that you're gonna avoid getting away from the grandfathering is if, is if, uh, that property on Logan and the property on College are moved out of this motion.
Uh, clarification on the floodplain, I don't remember, uh, exactly the end, but if it's damaged beyond a certain percentage...
That's what I was gonna say.
It doesn't matter whether we condemn it tonight or not.
Exactly.
It still would have to be brought up to floodplain, regardless of whether it's condemned or not, if the damage is more than fifty percent.
Yeah, and, and the improvements are gonna be required, and if they see fifty percent, uh, basically, there's a FEMA equation there, but even the ones that are in the floodplain, if they were to get a remodel to a certain extent, they would too have to come into compliance with the usual floodplain standards. To some extent, they're legal non-conformity right now, and that, but there's an equation. The only thing I can say is you can come in, we can evaluate what you're doing, and we can for sure then determine whether or not it would need to be floodplain compliance, because there are a few elements that exist that I can't, you know, tell, tell you with certainty tonight.
Right, so I need to come see you after and figure out...
Yes, you can come actually inspect the property. Based on what you're doing and everything, we can say, yes, you're gonna have to bring it up into compliance with the floodplain.
That's what I was...
But then I don't have, I don't have to come up with a board, I can settle everything with y'all as far as whether...
But if it gets condemned tonight, then my understanding is it's, falls out of grandfatherhood, and it becomes a lift issue. I'm just trying to be for real.
Right.
And let y'all know, so there's no false hope.
So what, what do I do as far as getting an extension on the con, on being condemned?
I think you're, you're gonna have to wait till we get through with all of these properties.
Right.
And we're gonna come back to these at the end.
And we're gonna come back to a motion.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
All right, this next property is ten fifteen West Logan. Uh, ten fifteen West Logan, uh, uh, I believe Mrs. Alivas, is that, is that her? Never, right. Um, she's here to speak about this. She is in the process of getting building permits to, uh, repair this property, but I explained to her that we were still gonna ask that it, uh, go through the process of being declared dangerous and dilapidated. Um, the electric's been off since two thousand and eleven. She's already established water service and, uh, gas service this year.
Is this floodzone, too?
Uh, I believe this one is outside the floodzone.
James, you see that?
All right. Did she wanna speak?
You wanna speak?
It looks like it, it looks like it is in the floodplain.
Then it is?
It's ten fifteen?
No, not in...
Ten fifteen West Logan.
So it's in, in between ninth and tenth?
Yeah.
Bill, are there other pictures?
In between ninth and tenth is ten eighty.
It is floodplain.
So it is floodplain, Bill.
Okay, ma'am, identify yourself.
My name is Anira Navaret. I purchased this property on November, and my intention is to remodel the house and leaving it to be my residence. Uh, when I came to order the water, I'm new in Guthrie. When I came to order the water right there next to this place, I was excited about it, and I told the ladies, I just got myself my house, and I need to order water service. What do I need to do? And they say, fill out the application, and I did, and I paid everything, I came from, uh, the court to pay, I pay my taxes, and then I came to order the water service, and they say, what do I, um, do I, what do I, I, I think I asked, where do I get a permit? Or, what, I, I say, do I need permits? Where do I get a permit? And I guess they assume I was wanting permits for the water, which I was talking about permits for the remodeling.
Mm-hmm.
And they told me, you don't need permits. And I go, what? I said, whoa, great, I don't need permits.
So what are you doing?
I'm remodeling already.
And you got your, you got your permits?
No.
No, see, never got permits.
Because they, they told me, I don't need permits.
Okay, what do you do?
Okay, but, well, now I know. So anyway, I'm willing to comply with all the requirements. Uh, he's gonna help me to find the plumber, the certified plumber, the electrician, because he's been working in construction several years.
Okay.
Uh, I said that my plan has to be perfect, I'm a perfectionist, so it's taking us a while. I did have it this morning, I came to and saw him this morning.
Mm-hmm.
So I have my plan. The three rooms on the back, uh, whoever owned the house before, they did an addition to the house very poorly, so I'm getting rid of that addition.
You're gonna take that addition off?
Right, and just leave the original house, like, where it, where it was.
Okay.
I already have electricity, I, there was already a smart meter there, I already have water, I'm planning not to have, um, gas ever, I don't like gas.
Okay.
And so I've been visiting with them several times.
Okay.
And I'm in process of, I already have five thousand dollars in material waiting there for me to get that permit.
All right, and you're aware of the Neighborhood Solutions opportunity, too, or...
I would like to be aware.
You can speak to one of our councilwomen here, and she might be able to help you, but Neighborhood Solutions is a resource for the type of work that you're talking about, they might be able to help.
Right now, street friend.
But again, this is another one in the floodplain.
Yeah.
We'll make sure we do the building process, building permit process, then we'll verify that it will be a foot above the floodplain before the application should be approved.
Okay.
Something else we might want to point out, a lot of this work has to be by licensed contractors, not just everybody can do work on a house.
Uh, I, my, my friend that is gonna live with me, he knows how to do this job.
You'll have to be licensed in Guthrie.
You're talking about the building part?
No.
Electrical plumbing.
Electrical plumbing.
For the remodel.
Utility.
Walls, and you can do all that, I think.
Okay. Any other questions, council? All right. Thank you for that input.
So, uh, do I need to do, am I, as long as I comply with all of this, then am I gonna have a problem, or?
Yeah, we need to...
I want to hear something.
So we don't have the plans yet? You were gonna bring the plans back to us, to mine, in the morning, I guess?
Yes, in the morning.
Okay.
And we still have the same issue of, if it is in the floodplain, we still have that issue to, to deal with, uh, before we get through with this.
Lifting the house. Okay.
Okay? All right, all right. Thank you, Bill.
Uh, next house is eleven eleven West Noble. Um, I believe this gentleman is here. Um, it, uh, has been at least since two thousand and seven, since it's had water. Uh, oh-four is the last time the electric company said it had electric. Uh, gas was two thousand and five. Uh, so the, the back half of the house is, the roof is shot on it, uh, several holes in the roof, and as you can see through that picture there, and all the water, when it rains, comes through the back porch right here, and that's collapsing in.
I don't think so.
Okay.
And I believe this gentleman's here.
All right. So somebody speak to this property.
Yes, sir, my name's Michael Keenan. I live at twenty-one seventy-seven Rockers Drive, Rockers, Florida. I own this house, and my plans are, I come up there every, I bought it in two thousand and, uh, seven. I've been coming up every two years to work on the house. Uh, I had plans to come up this year in July to work four to five months to, uh, demolish the back part of the house where the porch is. Uh, to the right of the porch is a bathroom with a flat roof, and then the other room was a bedroom, and that's the major, uh, dip, uh, collapse of the house. And once I rip that off, then it's, it's a straight shot from east to west, and there's a wall there that I'm gonna rebuild structurally, and then build, uh, new, uh, rafters on top, and then I'm gonna re-roof the whole house. My plans are, uh, originally, I'm gonna come up in July, I was gonna re, demo the back, I was gonna reframe everything, I was gonna hardy plank the rest of the house, the east, west, and back, and then I was gonna put a whole brand-new roof on this house, that way the exterior of it would be like a new house. And then I was planning on the following year, because I could go back to Florida, work, make money, come back up, and then I was gonna start on the interior of the house. This is gonna be my primary residence when I retire, and it's the only house I own. I have nothing in Florida I own, I live with family, and I've been working my butt off to save the money to come up here and fix this thing. And I do take full responsibility that I let it go too far, but I'm here to solve the problem and fix it. And I was a licensed framer in state of Florida, a professional licensed handyman of twenty different trades, a custom cabinet maker, and also I was a bathroom and kitchen remodel specialist. So I can do the work, it's just I, I need to get on it and start it.
You're right, and you're not, and you don't live here, you're remote.
Yes.
And you only come back here a month or two out of the year?
No, normally I come up here, I spend three to four months. And this July was my original plan to come up here, and I was gonna have quite a bit of money put up, until I, I put everything on hold last week, and I called Bill and talked to him, the code enforcement, and within one day, I shot my ass up here, driving straight through as fast as I could to get here to represent myself, because this is my primary residence, if I want to be in the future.
All right. Okay.
And when I came up here in July, I was gonna have enough funds to hire a couple to hire a couple of local guys with me, framers, to help me demolish this and put it back together.
Okay. Alright. But now we got an issue of condemnation. What, what do you see on this? I know what you see. Now... What are you asking for us, to go a year?
I can take care of the exterior of it, fix the whole exterior of it up, put all hardy plank on it, new windows on it, put a whole new roof on it, rip everything off, put a brand-new roof on it, shingle it, the whole nine yards. It'll be secured.
By July, or in July?
Well, I was gonna come up in July. And I was gonna do this anyway from July. And if it took four months or five months to do it, is my plan. So now I put everything on hold in Florida to come up here and jump on it, because I don't wanna lose the only home I have.
So you're gonna start it now and get that process done now while you're here?
Yep.
Well, then he's gonna have some time to do it.
Yeah, we had this discussion, was it last Friday?
Yeah, I'm a marine vet. And I don't wanna lose my home. And be a, being homeless, you know, eventually a homeless vet.
Okay. Right. Alright, sir. And you understand that even if we go through the condemnation process, if you're making progress in working with Bill and, and, and progress is, is being done with, uh, with according to code, that there is some leniency, but you got to be making that kind of progress?
Yes, sir, I understand.
Now, this isn't in a flood zone, is it?
No, this is actually just right outside.
This is at the end of the bridge.
Okay. Alright, any other questions, comments? Bill, any comments about this? You obviously have been talking.
Yeah, we talked last Friday about all the processing's gonna have to go through
Okay.
Work on fixing it up.
Okay. And so you have a good sense that he knows what's, what's your requirements are?
Right, right. Yeah, we talked about the license trades. We talked about permit process.
Okay.
The whole nine yards.
Alright. Alright, sir. Good deal. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next one.
Alright, the next house is 1115 West Washington. Uh, you see the side there, it's got the holes in the roof. Um, that's the street view from last summer, where the grass was tall. Um, here's the back of the house, all unsecured. See? The last time it had water was in 2016. Electric told us 2012. Uh, I don't know if that's right, but... And then the gas was in 2016, so... Is there somebody here to speak about this house?
Okay. Going forward, sir, to the microphone. Identify yourself, address. We'll go from there.
My name's Henry Scott, 1115 West Washington. Um, sent some of these pictures. My sister, it's, it's a family house. It belongs to my mom. She died, so it just kinda went to the brothers and sisters. And I've lived in it for a while, put a new roof on part of it. Uh, I had the materials for the back part. It was in the garage, someone kicked it in and stole the material and stuff. Uh, my sister was supposed to finish cleaning it up. She didn't do it. So I got in there a couple of months ago, cleaned the yard up, cleaned up some of that stuff right there by the back porch. Other than most of it, I cleaned up all this stuff here. Um, like I said, I, I still have to redo the windows and stuff there in the back, put a roof on the back. I just ain't got the material and stuff to do it yet.
So that's just on the exterior. What about the interior?
Interior's fine.
Interior's fine?
Yeah.
And, but nobody's...
It's just right there on the back porch, where it looks pretty bad, where I was gonna get, uh, the rest of the roof finished. 'Cause see, I, I got this side done, got this side done, and got the front done. And then all that was left was this back part. Well, then I moved out. My sister was supposed to take over and move into it, and she never did. And then, once I saw, they sent me a letter about the grass. And I called her and talked to her, "Were you not taking care of the place?" "I don't have the money." So I went in there and started cleaning everything up, which you could see in the yard. I got some brush pile back there in the yard where I've cleaned a lot of it up.
Okay. And what's your timeline to do these things that you're talking about? Windows, and...
Uh... As of right now, I'm having to take care of my wife and... Because she's fixing to have a heart transplant. That's why I'm trying to get together with the rest of my brothers and sisters, 'cause I can't do it all myself. So, we, I, we may have to just get it tore down.
Well, you guys have 30, 45 days at this point, so...
Like I said, I, I've done a lot of the work to it. That, uh, I mean, you see on this picture here. See, that door was locked. Someone kicked it in. And, uh, all this, this trash that you see right here, I've cleaned all that up. Like I said, I had the roofing material for that and someone got into the garage and took it.
Okay. Alright.
So I just need to get with him and just... I mean, have you seen it the past week or so, or...
Not the last week.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll just keep in touch with him on what we need to do, or?
Yep.
Okay.
If, if, if the council identifies this as, if we condemn this, this building...
Yeah.
Um, again, if you are making significant and, and continuous progress, and that will be your coordination with him,
Alright.
Um, then this thing will continue to slide. And if you don't, it will be torn down.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bill.
Alright, the next address is 1723 East Springer. Uh, we've had several code cases on this. This is right behind the Housing Authority. And, um, anyways, it's been unsecured in the past. It's been secured. The, I did check the police log on this. We've been, the police were called to this place 10 times in 2019. Hasn't had water service since, uh, 2013. Uh, hadn't had electric since 2012. And all the copper is, has been stripped from the house. Uh, is there somebody here for this one?
Is anybody in this house?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Go forward.
That's my last picture, yeah.
Identify yourself, sir.
My name's John Cover. I live at 702 South Paulino Court.
Okay.
Uh, that house was my mom's. We lived for the last 40 years. And I lived in it till 2010. And my son's living in it and he let it get all run down. But I was intending to clean it up and sell it, but I've been sick the last couple of years and I haven't been able to do it. But I've got some help now to do it and get it, or I can get it sold. All the rest of the houses in that neighborhood sold and been remodeled pretty easy.
Well, if all the copper's been stripped out, is that an issue with...
That's a big issue.
It all has to be remodeled. It all had to come out anyway. It's been in there since 1907, when the house was built.
Alright.
It wasn't any good.
They did a demo for you.
Yeah, okay. Alright. What, so what, what timeframe do you have to get this done?
Hopefully by August. I get it cleaned out. It's gotta be put through probate court and I'm not so sure how long it'll take. I've talked to Mr. McKinney, the attorney over here, about it. And he told me what it'd cost, but I'm not sure how long it'll take.
Okay.
So I need to get with him.
So you've got some legal issues before you can even start doing some demo?
It's gotta be put through probate court.
Okay. So it's in probate, or it's gotta be in probate?
Pardon me?
It's in probate currently?
No, I talked to the lawyer about it. And he told me how much money it'd take to do it. And I've gotta go get with him. I thought I'd better talk to y'all first.
Whose name's this house in, Bill?
My mom, dad's Tom, Robert Cover.
Okay.
I've been paying taxes on it since 2001. I put a new roof on it in about 2013.
So, well, I don't know. Okay. That's up to you.
I've come and boarded it up. I've tried to keep people out of it. And that, that's almost impossible. But the police has been arresting them and I haven't had anybody back in a while, so...
I don't know what the attorney tells you the probate would cost. I don't know what your rehab costs are gonna be. But it sounds like to me, I mean, you're probably gonna get torn down before you get that resolved. Probate isn't quick.
Yeah.
I might, I mean, if you don't owe anything on it, I might try to sell it to somebody for what it costs to get the probate done, so the house could be remodeled or saved.
I've been offered $20,000 for it, the way it said. So it costs $1,200 to fit it through probate court and it'll take about six months, according to what the attorney said. And like I said, there've been spothouses over there. It's been remodeled and sold pretty quick.
I mean...
But then two blocks of that one.
You'll probably be torn down before six months, though. I'm just, in all honesty.
What I wanted to find out. If you're wasting my money, you're gonna tear it down.
Unless the court will let you work on it in the process, I don't know.
Well, I was gonna clean it all up and...
But that don't matter, because it's not in your name. That's the problem. Realize that you're under a time constraint now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand that.
Okay. Uh, so I under, well, understand the challenges that you have legally as well as financially to get in there and do it. But what our responsibility is, is we can't have a dilapidated, unsafe, uh, environment in our, in the community. Uh, and we need to take action on that.
Well, it ain't collapsed.
No, it's still standing there.
Boarded up.
Yeah.
It's gotta be cleaned out. I can get a dumpster and do that. I mean, everything that needs to be done, I'm pretty sure I can have done by August.
Well, that's part of making the substantial continual improvement that we talked about, that may buy you some more time.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's, that coordinating with, with Bill and staff.
That's, Bill's got a big job ahead of him.
Alright.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, sir. Thank you.
I understand that. Bill's up to it.
Thank you.
Alright.
Bill? Thank you.
Next house is 1901 West Warner. Uh, hasn't had water service since 2017. Uh, gas service, 2017. Uh, since 2017, our police have visited this house 30 times on calls. That's the, the last two houses that we've, we've gone over. This is the last one. That's... There are calls from the police, wanting us to go do something about it.
Wanting to do what?
Wanting us to do something about them, because people always break into them. You have this, this nuisance of the neighbors don't know who's in the house next door to them.
Is there anybody here representing this owner? Okay. Alright. It's not in a flood zone, or it is?
It's on 19th, it's at 19th and Warner.
So it's not?
Eighteenth, on the corner, 18th and Warner.
Okay.
When this one made the list, I've got a lot of calls and emails and contacts from people in the neighborhood. So if it stays on here and we pass this, I want to s, see if we can get that up to be one of them that... I don't know how many we're gonna do or not, but this was one, I think we need to put some attention on. It's been a nuisance for the neighbors for several years. And so I don't want it to be, which I don't know if this is in any particular order, but I didn't want it to get addressed before we run out of funds to address them or whatever, so...
Make it top of the priority.
Right. Right.
We have, we have budgeted for the demolition of... All of these. We know, we don't know what the bids are, but, uh...
We have $45,000 budgeted this year, which is more than last year.
Okay.
And there's 15 houses.
Well, what we wanna do, and I think I can speak for James, 'cause we had a conversation earlier today and it goes on the cusp of what Don's talking about, is that we just wanna be able to prioritize, uh, the money being spent. In other words, uh...
And you can...
By voicing stuff like this, I think that prioritizes it. Um, you know, we don't wanna see all of a sudden a, a real nuisance. You got something, 30 times the cops are called on. They want something done about it. We don't wanna see that last on the list and all of a sudden, two years from now, we're having the same conversation about the same house.
When we open bids, that's when you all get...
Right, we can award them in that order.
Alright.
Then that's when we prioritize.
Okay, so we have got these properties. We have got, um, uh, well, let me, first of all, any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, I closed the public hearing component of this element. Uh, and now I ask the council, uh, do we have a motion then to condemn, um, these properties as listed? Or any other discussion? Oh, sorry.
Um, staff would recommend if the council would allow us, 'cause we've had some unique situations come up tonight, flood plain, uh, auxiliary buildings standing all out by itself. Uh, if we could have a table list to the next council meeting so we can work through some of these issues, make sure we're giving people good advice, that we're giving city council good advice, 'cause some of them you actually have to spend some time on to know what you can and cannot do. And that would give us time to go back and address some of the questions tonight and then bring you back with more specific answers.
Okay. Alright. So... Well, I think there's three that, and that's a good idea. There's three that are in question, from what I was able to notate. I have four. Four. But that's what the staff can be having that dialogue about. And we can, uh, discuss those at the, at the next council meeting. I'll make a motion to table. Motion, motion and second to table. Any other discussion? Vote?
I'll vote, Ryan.
See the votes? So you all have two more weeks to get with the city and find out what you're gonna do? I was talking to them, sorry. Uh, we have, uh, unanimous approval then to table this, uh, these, uh, this item, uh, for next city council meeting. And there'll be more staff input by then. Item number four.
If you want, uh, we can do this at the next meeting, since we spent so much time on this. But we went back and did, uh, if you just show them, Bill, go next slide. Okay, we, we went back and, uh, to 2018 and we've done a PowerPoint, uh, showing whether the owner abated the nuisance or whether the city did, what our cost was, how much we've gotten back so far, and then how much is still, uh, we got invested in liens on these properties. And we got pictures of them. And we got 18 and 19. We just gonna bring you up to date on, uh, if you want, given the time, we'll be addressing this. We could do, add this report to the one that we do two weeks from now, if you would like, of course, to.
Could you, can you email this to us as well, in the meantime? That'd be helpful. Alright. Thank you. So, motion to, uh, move this to next city council meeting? So, motion to move this to next city council meeting, this item, table until next city council?
It's not an action item.
It's not an action?
Well, yeah, it is. Oh, no, we already did the one.
It's just a report. But we'll, we'll email it to you, and we'll also give the report at the next meeting as part of the resolution.
Okay, all right. So, item number five, discussion possible action to award an RFQ 2019-8 concerning a consultant for the airport. Shalon?
One clarification on this. Approving this master airport engineering consulting service agreement also includes approving amendment number one for the rehabilitate terminal apron project that was attached to it. Just wanna make sure you realize you're approving both.
So in order to continue to receive FAA grants, FAA requires that we go through a consultant engineering selection process every five years. So with that being said, we submit, there are... The request for qualifications, there are five firms that we sent that out to. In return, we got three respondents. Those three, if you, do you wanna know the five? I can tell you the three we received among. So it's on the cover letter, the five that we, we sent them out to was KSA, CEC Corporation, Delta Airport Consultants, Garver, and Lochner Engineering. The three that we received back were from CEC Corporation, Delta Airport Consultants, and ECS Southwest. So if you, in your packet there, you have a summary of the qualifications. The consultant, we had a consultant selection committee that comprised of the city manager, Leroy Alsop, our airport board chairman, who is Dick Geib, and myself, Shalon Stanley, airport director. Then the next thing, what we did is we created a matrix, that's also there. And that selection criteria had eight of the areas on the RFQ referencing all of the requests for qualifications with a maximum total of 100 points, with the highest score being the best. The ranking, well, the selection committee agreed upon the ranking, which is listed as CEC coming in at 95 points, Delta Airport Consultants coming in at 86, and ECS coming in at 39.
So you can scrap that one right out again? So it's between you two.
Yes. So at the airport board agrees with the selection committee that we ask that you guys consider approval to award that contract to CEC.
What's the cost of this?
I'm sorry?
What's the cost associated with all this?
All that is presented in the contract and the amendment number one. So the contract doesn't really give you costs. It gives you your hourly wages, so there's a base that we set that up on. Then your amendment, number one, which is attached in there, will give you what the owner-to-engineer agreement is. What that agreement's for is for the rehabilitation of our terminal apron slash ramp. They're used interchangeably. That terminal apron is the whole area in front of our terminal building. So that would be the first project.
It's not the approval of a project, it's just the approval of a consultant that will do the rest of the work, including your five-year, your, five-year plan.
Plus the first.
Strategic plan, plus the first amendment.
Yes, plus first, correct.
That's what I'm trying to find out, what is the cost of the consultant?
The individual hours are listed.
The individual hour, that's what I'm saying, so we don't know, is at the end of the day.
It varies. What, what you've done is, you've done a master contract.
I get it, I get it.
And then, small jobs, they can do out of the master contract. Anything of any size, they do an addendum. And then if it's over $25,000, you all approve each addendum, each project. And remember, because this is the airport, 90% of it's being paid for by FAA.
And then we subsidize the other 5% and Edmund Five.
Correct.
Right. Well.
I'm sorry.
I'll just say, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the RFQ.
Plus the amendment number one.
Thank you.
Okay, your motion and a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, sir.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve RFQ 2019-8, plus amendment number one. Item number six, discussion possible action to adopt ordinance number 3328 concerning hours in our parks. Staff? Tenny?
In 2012, council approved an ordinance 3229. It was amending chapter 15, Parks and Recreation. And during that process, Article III, use of parks, was omitted. What we're asking to do is reinstate Article III back in the, the book of ordinance, establishing the new hours of oper, well, they're not new hours, but establishing the same hours of operation that we've had in the past for all of our parks. We did clean up the ordinance through the process, removing Noble Park and adding Banner Park to the ordinance. And then also, through that process, we've added in a section two for parking regulations in our parks, to state parking spots in and adjacent to the city parks are for park users only, no overnight parking, parking ride use, or residential parking. This was, brought to our attention, we were starting to have some issues around a few of our parks, Banner Park specifically. And then also, we put a section three in the ordinance that includes some splash pad rules, some of the new amenities with the splash pads. We were having some issues with. I can go through the rules that the Parks Board has put forth for approval. It'd be no pets, food, glass objects, towels, and smoking is not permitted. Bikes, skate, excuse me, bikes, skateboards, roller skates, blades must remain on hard surface walking paths. Swim diapers required. Children under 12 must be accompanied by an adult, and, and no lifeguard on duty. All of this was discussed with our Parks Board and passed unanimously through them, and.
So they just can't have a towel in the splash pad?
They'll, they can have their towels at the splash pad. What we were running into, the splash pads are designed to drain in, and the splash pads were getting put in the actual drain themselves. The towels were. And then the water was just filling up, becoming a wading pool, and going over the sides of the sidewalk.
I'd like to approve this, man.
Then do it.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions of Tenny?
Nope.
Submit your votes.
Thanks. All votes, sir.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to adopt ordinance number 3328, adding Article III as updated, and so on. Thank you. Item number seven, discussion possible action to adopt ordinance number 3329 concerning speed limits.
This one here is, I brought to you a little while back. It'd be ordinance number, I believe, 3212, in chapter 20, article 6. It's the one over all of our speed limits in town. Again, this one is another one recommended by ODOT. They've reached out to us during the construction of the BiDoc. The speed limit was 30 mile an hour through the same section. We met roughly a year ago, or a little bit longer, about the same time that the pedestrian crosswalks went up on Walnut, is when this discussion came forth to, to leave it at 30 mile an hour from Drexel up to First Street. And now they've reached out to us, asking for a concurrence letter before they present it to the traffic engineers on ODOT's side.
Okay, all right. Any questions of Tenny on that? Nope. I'll entertain then a motion.
So moved.
A motion, and we have a second.
Yes.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, sir.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to adopt ordinance 3329. Item number eight, discussion possible action. Do we request the Guthrie Public Library and Friends of the Library to support exploration for the creation of a Logan County library system? Suzette?
So we are requesting the city council to support us exploring what a system library would look like. We're asking, within the next 60 to 90 days, to touch base with you, and during that timeframe, have a plan. Basically, provide a timeline, who might be interested, what that could look like, and any data that you all spoke about during the workshop.
Okay, any other, any questions? We did have a workshop on this earlier. For those of you that are, are viewing us on TV, we had our workshop on the, on the projection, the vision, and, and some of the information that the council was desiring us of.
Well, I'd like to tell you guys, I wish we had more groups that were wanting to initiate something, wanting to get something going. Usually when we have a group that big, it's for somebody wanting to fight over something. So it, it was good to see you guys have that support, and everybody come in trying to do something, at least there's some initiative. You know, my personal opinion, I think you've got an uphill battle to get it done. But who am I to get in your way? I mean, if you wanna explore it, go ahead, and I'll make the motion that we.
I'll second explore it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, sir.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to explore the creation of the library system.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Item number nine, update and discussion of the 2020 strategic priorities as it pertains to HR.
We'll cover that at the next meeting.
Gonna cover that at the next meeting, okay? We'll move that, item number nine then, also to our next city council meeting. City manager report.
Don't have any additional reports.
Okay. Councilman Bothrowide?
Well, I do have something, actually. What I would like is, I would like to have a workshop, you know, when we, back in October, I guess, when we passed the budget, we talked about having a, having a workshop on certain parts of the budget. I don't want it to, basically what I want is a quarterly review of the budget. And I'd like to have that on our next meeting, if possible. Or the following one after that, at the latest, if possible, but preferably the next one. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff. Appreciate your hard work, especially Bill. I know we had, had put in a bunch of time tonight, and then also, Tenny. I know it's tough on what you're having to do as well. And I go to the airport board meetings, and you guys run a pot ship there, so I like that, too. The, the library deal, I think it's something that we need to look at. You know, like I said, you know, I agree with what the, all you guys have been saying, which is, we don't wanna spend any more money, so let's hope that whatever happens. I'm like you, I think it's an uphill battle, but you never know. I mean, the people, they wanna pass this on themselves, so I say, go for it if you can. Other than that, thank you, staff.
Councilman Long, counsel.
I'm good, thanks.
Quarantine him, quarantine him.
Councilman Case?
I would like to second what Don said just a minute ago. Seeing a group of people like we have for the library in the workshop was wonderful. I wish we had more meetings like that. I wish, I wish this chamber would feel like that, with people that really cared. I think it's awesome.
Councilman Chandler?
Long will not confirm or deny if he's been tested for the coronavirus.
We would like to know that.
Y'all are at your own risk. Aside from that, I've had occasion in the past several months to go through or go to several small towns. And something that I've noticed that might help us here, I don't know. Some of the towns, they're getting, like a group, whether it be economic development, or the chamber, or a correlation of people, and some of their empty downtown buildings, and you drive through, and they'll have stuff on the front windows, you know. You could be here, choose our town, phone numbers, love this space, that kinda. And it's, it's basically just decorated, but it's promoting the empty spaces. And, you know, I think that's something we might, could take a, a page out of their book, that I've noticed, because we have places downtown that I'm sure they would like to have people in the buildings. And just like me and those other towns driving through, I would have no idea that the space was available, or that anybody even cared that there was something in there. And I, to myself, I don't think it would be a big deal for our economic development people to, and maybe even the chamber, you know. Economic development is to bring business here. The chamber is to help promote them once they are here. So I'm just throwing this out, hoping somebody will hear it and take a, you know, kind of an idea to it, to, you know, like, partner with some of these buildings that people want to get businesses in, and, and do some sort of a thing like that. I mean, economic development is nice to sit and talk about a factory that may come 10 years from now. But I think that's something that we could do here and now. Yeah, wouldn't do a lot of, wouldn't take a lot of money or effort.
You want a motion?
What we'll try to do is get councilmen's picture up in every building.
Well, that might work. Love this space and his phone number, or something like that.
Okay, Councilman Paget?
You know, one thing about going last is that I don't have anything to say other than the other council members have said some very good points. I agree with every one of you. And I think that Suzette did the right thing, coming to us and, and trying to make the library expand. So kudos to everybody.
Good. Leroy, you wanted a second chance?
Second chance?
The workshop at the next meeting, and potentially the following meeting, we already have something scheduled that will eat those up on, that will be special meetings of the Economic Development Authority. So it may be after the next two meetings, before the budget, we can do the budget.
All right.
Or I'm available if we wanna have a separate side meeting besides that, even. If others are.
It's gonna be down at Fifth Street Bridge.
Fifth Street Bridge?
Bring your fishing pole.
Okay. We, we still have opportunity for individuals to become more involved with boards and commissions. It's on the city website, please go to it. Look, just click on where it says volunteers, or help, help desired, and it will take you right to where we have those activities. Again, let me join, join the crowd that says congratulations to all those that were here presenting a vision for a Logan County system library service. And, and thank you for your perseverance of waiting through now almost two hours of city council, in addition to your one hour of workshop. So thank you for, for that, for your passion that makes that happen.